Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Monday, January 22. It is 7:00 PM. With us tonight we have Tim Hagler, Judy Conroy, Drew Delaney, I'm John Lee, Dave Andrews, sorry, Dave Anderson, Bob Fitzgerald, Mark Major, Lauren Mitchelskowsky, and Pat DeShanes from the Zoning Board Economic Development. Okay, first case we have is case number 23-30 for One Fox Hill Drive. Is the applicant here?
I believe the applicant is here, Chairman, but I was asked by the applicant to provide some guidance and a site plan, which I think you did not have previously. I'm not sure. So by the way, my name is John Glossa, Glossa Engineering, 46th East Street in East Walpole. So we went to the site, did a topo and rotation survey, put together a plan with the zoning, with some proposed improvements and with the zoning schedule so that you would have a knowledge or good knowledge or better knowledge of exactly what changes the proposal makes to the ground out there and to how it can conform to the zoning bylaw. So just quickly, I know you've already started this hearing. It's a highway business zone, so if I can just quickly go over the zoning requirements. Forty thousand square feet is required, and it's 101 square feet. Forty thousand is required, 101,000 is 620 pounds, that's what's required. It needs 200 feet of frontage. It's existing non-conforming with 166.5 feet of frontage. The underlying zoning, the highway business, you can cover 90 percent. You can cover 50 percent with the building and 17.4 percent. You can cover 90 percent with the building and all other impervious. And right now it's 37.7 percent. And as far as parking, you need 35 parking spaces under today's requirement, which is one for every 500 square feet. And there are 46 parking spaces out there now. As far as the water protection zone, and you know it's in Zone or in Area 3, you can only cover 15 percent of the lot with all of your impervious. And right now it is at 37.7 percent. So after meeting with my client, Jim Crowley in the Building Inspector's Office, Pat and the Fire Chief, the Deputy Chief that I met down with Jim Crowley one day, and sort of swapped plans, swapped ideas and plans back and forth, this is what we came up with. So this is going to be the door to the body shop here. The fire department wants a 20-foot wide access all the way to that door. So we provided, that's going to entail, right here, that's going to entail 1,806 square feet of pavement to create that driveway from there to there. And so to offset that, so as I said, we only need 35 parking spaces now. So there's 11 extra parking spaces. We're taking areas in the front. There's a little area over here, which is not part of a parking space in the front left of the parking area. There's the area where the utility pole is, which is paved, but no one can park there because there's a utility pole there. There's an area just to the left as you come in. That's not wide enough for a parking stall. So we're going to remove pavement there across from that area next to what I'm laying, or we play the parking space 25. We're going to create a little bit of an island there. And then past where the current dumpster is, we're going to take a large area there and we're going to turn that from pavement into grass. And we put a detail on there of what that would look like, how they're going to have to remove all of the pavement, remove the gravel, and put in a suitable room and seat it. And that adds up. And then on top of that, there's already pavement here that brings you to the door where you would walk into the building. So we're deducting that because that's going to be counted twice if you don't. And then we're going to remove this little bit of sidewalk right here. That's to the left of the proposed driveway. There's no reason to have that because now someone can just simply walk up the 20-foot wide driveway into the front of the building through the existing walkway. That's to the right of this, I'm working at it. So that essentially offsets the 1,800 square feet of pavement. So as I said, we're going from 46 stalls to 35 stalls. And then as far as storage of vehicles, so this area right here, which is just to the right of the new accessway to the building, will be set aside. It's already existing pavement. It's already striped for parking spaces. But because it's vehicle storage, they don't need to park them at any sort of, with, you know, in a nine-by-18-and-a-half stall. They can kind of get them in there as best they can. So we would say that there's probably enough room there for 10 to 12 cars to park there. The other thing this plan shows is that because now this is called, this would be deemed a commercial garage, it has to have floor drains. So this building's on septic system, so you can't, so if it was on sewer, you'd have an MDC or MWRA type gas trap and you'd connect that into the sewer. You can't do that here. So the solution is you do a tight tank. So we put in a 1,000-gallon tight tank there. It doesn't really get much flow. We've done plenty of these before and, you know, it's actually more than a year or so before they even get filled up because it's just, you know, snow that drips off of cars when they're brought in there winter, a little bit of water that would drip off a car when it's brought in when it's raining. It doesn't really, it doesn't really generate a lot of liquid, but it's required because that's what the plumbing code says. So that's part of the plan there. And then the other thing we show on the plan, it's not required anywhere, but we just thought we would show it because it makes good sense. And that is that there are two catch basins in these parking lots. One is right here, near where the driveway goes up to the building. And then the other one is in the front here. So those are simply catch basins with sumps, but the pipes that lead from them sort of have no protection. Back in the earlier days, there was a thing called an MDC hood, which was a cast iron hood that they would put over these. I mean, you still see them on details, even though most people don't use those now. But what we're saying is that we're going to put in what's called a snout, which just sort of slides into that pipe and it does the same thing. So any of you who have septic tanks, septic systems, kind of know what that is. And that is, it's the pipe bends down into the catch basin. So as the water that runs into it builds up in the catch basin, things that float, including, you know, coffee cups, pieces of paper, anything that floats can't get, it's going to float on the top of that water and can't get out of the catch basin. And that includes, you know, oils, grease, antifreeze, gasoline, anything that can float is going to get trapped in that catch basin. And then the catch basin obviously is emptied once a year, maybe twice a year, and all of those things then are removed from the drainage system. It's just good policy. I'm surprised that, you know, the town doesn't do it more often with some of their catch basins, but just the way it is. So that's our plan, as I said. Met with Patrick, met with Jim Crowley, met with the Deputy Fire Chief, went over this. Everyone seemed to be satisfied, so I guess we're, hopefully, the Zoning Board will be satisfied.
Anybody have any questions on this? Because I've got some. Go ahead, Judy.
The last time the applicant was here, he basically had, and this is probably from either Patrick or John, nothing, he had nothing, like he might as well have come in with a napkin. Do we have everything? Is this application 100 percent complete?
Yeah, so they provided us a civil engineering stamped plot plan. We do have also stamps on those architectural renderings from their architect. So all of those initial materials that we needed originally, we do have.
But we also have, this is answering your question.
Yes.
The applicant has said that they want to have a paint booth and other things. So that's going to be a separate special permit. So tonight, what we're just looking at is this, basically the driveway going in into the building and the changes that that makes on the plan.
Okay.
But they're going to be back.
Can they do any business, John? Can he do bodywork? Minus the painting?
I would think so.
So I mean, the permit is for auto, body, mechanic, and that's how it's described within the table of use. The separate permit that you mentioned, John, so that is if the applicant does wish to go forward with paint booths, then we need to come back for a separate permit for that use within the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Then we have that letter from Jim Crowley, the building commissioner, explaining it.
I mean, that's my concern. I feel it's kind of risky to get half permission to start your business because you're going to come back and ask for a special permit and, you know, there's a chance you could say no.
True.
So I don't understand why it's not a concurrent special permit, not to waste our time, but let's run them together. What is the issue with not running them together as far as the applicant goes? Maybe Mr. Glossa, can you answer that question?
I don't know. Mr. Crowley just mentioned to me that the application now would just simply be for the use of repairing vehicles, not necessarily for the spray booth. So that's your understanding, Chris? That's their understanding. So I understand you don't want to hold two hearings on the same, but I think that they would like to at least get started with renovations to the building and with the exterior changes to the lot.
That's somewhat what I gathered as well, talking to Jim Crowley. And I know the applicant's here as well, but I think there's a sizable amount of work that they need to do to the building before it could be in operation. Whether or not they come back in the interim, that's entirely their prerogative.
So if I understand it correctly, this business is coming from another town and they do auto, they do auto mechanics and auto body. And it was my understanding at the last meeting that that whole conglomeration is moving to One Fox Hill.
Auto repair. They're not going to do any painting here until they get a separate permit from the zoning board. No painting.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
I have some questions about the changes in the property. Does the applicant own this property?
I think they do now, right? You own it now?
No, we're going through the process of the sales.
For the entire parcel?
Yeah, you're owning, yeah. They're going to buy the entire building.
So if they buy the entire property, then they do have control over the parking lot because the changes that they're going to ask for, such as removing some of the parking spots that you've described, that's what I want to talk about. So they will have total site control of this?
That's correct.
Okay. So this is in the groundwater protection zoning district. We want to make sure that we protect the groundwater and the wells, which as we all know are not too far from this location. Right now it's at 37 percent impervious coverage. The limit is, would be 17, 17 percent. So it's way over.
15 percent.
15 percent. Okay. So point is that it's over by a significant amount to start with. So when you take out these parking spots and you've, we can see where they are on the map. How, what's going to be done to protect these areas? Is there going to be granite curbing? Is there going to be concrete curbing? What's going to be around them to protect those from being used as parking?
Well, there would be a bituminous berm, which is what's around the property now.
Okay. I don't believe that's shown on the plan. So all these areas that are now going to be put, you know, grass, right? Those will have bituminous curbing around them?
Yeah.
I asked about the site control. So if we had a condition, you talked about the catch basins. A condition could be that the owner is required for annual cleaning of the catch basins?
Yeah.
So if a special permit was granted, I think we would look at all areas that are being paved are going to have, and pavement removed will have bituminous curbing put around them?
Correct.
Or we could go for concrete curbing?
It's up to you. I mean, to me, concrete curbing's just something that falls apart over time. But bituminous, I know bituminous falls apart, but it's easy to fix. It's easy to replace it. Concrete, not so much.
More durable, I mean. Board, what are your thoughts on protecting these areas that are being created as compensation areas with curbing?
Either that or some sort of planting or ballards or something just to prevent any sort of vehicle storage on those areas, I think, would work.
Yeah, and I heard, you know, through the grapevine that there's obviously some concern about, you know, vehicles not being parked on the pavement. But that's not going to happen. I told the applicants that if they find out that the area that's reserved for their cars that they're going to be fixing is not large enough, they need to come back in front of either the Planning Board or the Zoning Board or somebody and, you know, show how that's going to work. So they understand that. But I understand what you're saying also. We have no, they have no problem with protecting the areas with, you know, either bituminous berm or some other way. I would say it's either a bituminous shoe berm that's six inches high or a Cape Cod-style berm that's one foot wide and four inches high at the back. So either one of those or whatever they choose would certainly prevent anyone from, you know, driving up and parking off of the paved area. If you'd like something else, we can do that, but I think that's enough.
Because I would recommend just not, either in lieu of the grass, doing shrubs or trees or something that would...
Sure, we can show that also.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I feel like you can jump a curb if you really want to.
Okay, we can show it being planted with some shrubs, azaleas and rhododendrons or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, do you want to see that on the plan or do you want to make that as a condition?
I'm comfortable doing it as a condition. Just require plantings within the newly created impervious.
Put a few geraniums out there, that's going to satisfy it. My only concern when, if you don't have it specifically on the plan, a year, six months from now, they come back and say, oh yeah, we did planting and that's not really what we had in mind yet.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't have, some of the spots look to be very narrow and small, you know, little islands, so I don't know what would be appropriate, frankly, to plant in those sections.
You know, any planting a minimum of 18 inches high, right? So I mean, nobody's going to drive a car over and park on a plant that's 18 inches high. So if you made that a condition, we can add it to the plan and then you'll have conditions in a plan that match. If that's something that can be done, we can have, you know, a plan back to the, to your administration tomorrow morning.
True. With regards to pumping the tank, is that something that's done by anyone or does that have to be monitored and documented? Or how does that necessarily take place?
Yeah, it's not a septic pumper. It has to be like Clean Harbors or someone like that because that, and that's all controlled by the state, by the DEP. So that's pretty much same with, you know, all of your repair stations, they all, you know, most of them, I would guess, are connected to the sewer, but they all have what we used to call an MDC gas trap, right? They all have a trap. And those have to be pumped by Clean Harbors or someone like that. And that's all controlled by the DEP. And nobody, no septic pumper's going to go anywhere near something like that because it's just, it's just too dangerous for them to do that.
And then now how normally would you see something like a monitoring well or anything like that in place?
So it has an alarm now. When it's two-thirds full, there's an alarm that lets the owner or the occupiers know that it's two-thirds full and that they need to get it pumped dry. As I said, in my experience, it takes a long time to fill it up because it just doesn't, you know, it just doesn't generate a lot of flow going into it.
Judy?
I just, maybe I don't understand quite the impervious. If we only allow 15 percent, how are we protecting the wetland protection Area 3 by allowing the applicant to be 37 percent?
But it's already 37 percent. We're not adding anything. Whatever we add, we're taking it away from somewhere else. So it's 1,806 square feet of pavement to create that driveway and it's 1,806 square feet of area that's existing pavement that's going to be removed and turned into, I think now we're going to turn it into mulch and plantings. So it's existing non-conforming. We're just simply swapping out where the, where the impervious is going to be and where new pervious is going to be.
And there's no consideration to go less to try to get closer to the 15? None whatsoever?
Well, we still have to meet the requirement for 35 parking spaces, so that's sort of what drives it.
Okay. And as far as the catch basins with the pumps and the snouts, you mentioned the two catch basins that are there?
The two catch basins, they should be pumped once a year. So they're going to, so right now, right? I mean, something drips off of a car or whatever, oil, gasoline, antifreeze, it goes into these catch basins, goes into the drain system and ends up in a stream somewhere. So this is, I mean, it's not 100 percent taking everything out, but at least it's a start in the sort of, you know, the treatment train, so to speak, right? It's the first level. We don't really have the ability to do anything else here, but it's a start. I'm just, you know, surprised it's not used more often in other settings. But for everything that we do that's new, when we're in front of the Planning Board or in front of this board or in front of the Conservation Commission, all of the catch basins have snouts in them to hold the floatables back. It's not perfect. Some stuff gets through, but it's better than having nothing where everything gets through. And if you think about that, because these things float, gasoline, oils, grease, they float. Soon as they go in that catch basin, right out the pipe. So this is just a chance to hold that into the catch basin and pump that out.
And would you call that a gas-oil separator?
No.
What would you call it?
It's a hooded, it's actually, the word is a hooded deep sump catch basin. So in this case, it's a hooded catch basin.
And it's, the tight tank is what has the alarm?
Yeah, the tight tank has an alarm.
So that's probably going to be, that most likely will go off more than once a year to be...
My experience, that's going to go off in about five years from the day it's put in. There's very little flow that goes into that unless, do you wash the cars inside? No. So just think about it. The only flow that goes in there is in the winter, you drive a car in there. It has some snow on it. It melts and it gets into the floor drain. In the summer, if you bring a car in that's wet because it's raining out. But other than that, there really isn't any flow going into the system. So it takes a long time to fill up that tank.
And as an engineering, from an engineering standpoint, the two hooded catch basins that are existing, do you see a need for any additional ones to be placed on the property?
For additional catch basins? No, they're set at the low points in the parking lot. Parking lot's kind of crowned like that. So there's one catch basin on one side and one on the other side. So all of the flow now is going to the catch basins.
Question on the tight tank. You mentioned that there would be somebody like Clean Harbors that would be called to pump it, which suggests that it would have some hazardous component potentially from the floor drains. I just kind of...
Right, again, it's going to have, it potentially can have gasoline, oils, grease, anything that falls, antifreeze, anything that falls off of a car.
Right, right.
So it's not sewage. It's not something that a septic system pumper can pump. It has to be pumped by a special firm like Clean Harbors. Something, it can't be brought down to the, you know, local grit chamber like we have here in Walpole and dumped it. It's not handled that way.
Because I believe there was originally a note from the town engineer before this letter that came out today that noted that a section of the Water Resources Protection Overlay District that requires a special permit for the storage of liquid hazardous materials as defined under 21E. And there are certain requirements that the tank be above ground and et cetera. And I'm just trying to understand whether what's going to end up in that tank is going to be considered a liquid hazardous material under Chapter 21E, given that it's likely to contain some gasoline or other...
I don't think, I think what, I didn't read this, but I think what they're talking about is if you're storing a product, not a residue, I don't know how you could pump this. In fact, pumping this is not really, you could, but you sort of want to separate electricity from... from, you know, gasoline, if you're-
Right. Yeah, the language that they were referring to says, "Storage of liquid hazardous materials as defined under 21E and/or liquid petroleum products," which, I would agree, that latter phrase sort of refers to oil or gasoline.
Yeah, I don't think that the words, though, the storage is, this is residue, I mean, it's being stored, but it's not being stored for the purpose of using it somewhere or something, it's being stored for the purpose of not letting it get into the environment, so.
But, as you say, for potentially five years before it has to be moved?
I mean, you can make a condition that it's pumped out every year, I'm sure they'll comply with that. I'm just saying that for, to get one thousand gallons in this, it's going to take a long time. But if you want it pumped every year, I'm sure that the applicant will comply with that.
Actually, Bob, I thought one of the conditions would be, it would be on a operations and maintenance plan for the tight tank, so-
The pumping?
For the pumping, yeah.
Yep.
So, I don't know whether we have to say it has to be done annually, but they have to have a operation and maintenance plan that's one of the conditions that we'd have.
Okay. And will it be above ground, or?
No, it's below ground, right? Because it's, so inside this building now, there'll be little drains, right, and a little four-inch pipe, so anything that falls off of the cars will flow to that drain and then flow into this tank, so it has to be below ground.
And though, I know it's a tight tank, but there's no secondary containment or anything like that associated with it?
No. I mean, we usually worry about water getting into these tanks, not going out of these tanks.
Mr. Glossop, one of the things, this is a non-conforming lot because the frontage is one hundred sixty-six feet.
Yeah.
So, did you happen to look to figure out what happened? At one point, this lot had frontage on Route One.
Yeah.
Do you know why it's now non-conforming?
Well, I think because the town changed the zoning requirement, my guess, but I didn't really look into that.
Okay.
Just noted-
Actually, I think the lot was cut off, making this non-conforming, and I don't know how that happened. Town council, how could that happen?
Can you reframe it?
Yeah. This used to be a large parcel that went all the way out to Washington Street, and, not Washington Street, out to Route One, Providence Highway there. And at some point, the front lot was, the front yard was cut off, and now there's a big storage place there. If a lot is cut like that, can they make one, make it non-conforming?
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
Sorry.
I don't know how it became non-conforming on that. Okay. Anything else? Judy?
I just wanted to be clear on the area where the auto mechanics is happening, is this side of the building for this new garage door being put in?
Yes.
Is there a reason why there's only one door, one garage door? I'm just, I'm just asking for-
I think the reason is they only need one garage door to, you know, do their, to do what they need to do.
Okay. I'm just thinking of, I'm thinking of fire safety. If that, something happens and that door can't open and something going on, there's no, no other way for fire access or egress?
Well, there's a door.
A door, physical door for a person, okay?
Right. There's a door right next to the, next to the door where you'd bring the vehicles in. So I don't, I don't know, I'm kind of above my expertise here.
You're the engineer, I know.
Right. But the, Kevin Uniac, the architect, believe me, I've done a lot of work with Kevin, he's a really smart guy, so if he says that's, and the fire department was, at least with my quick meeting with them, was, was, you know, satisfied with the arrangement, so I doubt if, you know, Mr. Crowley's going to let anything go there that doesn't need the current code, so.
I have one more question. Sorry. Can you just walk me through why we would not want a monitoring well on this property where we're changing the use of the building and introducing possible contaminants to such a sensitive area like Overlay District?
So you're looking for a monitor well to-
I guess I'm just curious that any sort of runoffs into these impervious areas that aren't captured within the system that you're proposing, that aren't somehow getting into the groundwater in that area? I guess, I don't know, I'm looking for your answer as to why we wouldn't necessarily need to know that runoffs aren't escaping this tight tank that you're saying?
So you would like to see a monitor well, which would simply be a well that would be inserted down into the ground, sort of a perforated well, and then every once in a while, take a sample of that to see if there's hydrocarbons, to see if there's gasoline or oil?
I mean, if you tell me that that's the first time ever and totally ridiculous, then I guess I would listen to what you have to say.
Yeah, it's just not something that is normally done for something like this. I mean, I think it's done when you have an active gasoline station, where you have, you know, a tank under there that has, you know, ten or fifteen thousand gallons or whatever they have, and you're, you know, constantly filling and emptying and doing this and that. This is a, this is a very small operation. I'm going to assume that, you know, just the cars running up and down Route One probably drop more gasoline, grease, oil, antifreeze onto the ground than you'd ever get here, so just don't think it would, it would sort of get you much, and I think it'd kind of be expensive, not necessarily the initial installation, but just the monitoring-
Okay.
-of something like that. Just don't think that there's enough risk involved.
That answers the question. I appreciate that.
Now, Mr. Glossop?
Snow removal? Are they just going to put the snow on these nice little grass areas and bury the geraniums that you planted?
Right now, they've got snow removal that's been taking place for a long time. Do you show snow removal on this?
We don't, Mr. Chairman, but we could if you would like us to. We can add snow removal or snow areas to store snow, and then, again, we can, you know, if there's some requirement to remove snow and it becomes a certain amount, that's certainly a reasonable condition.
So, show, to show snow storage? Anybody else have questions or comments?
I just have one more quest, one more question. Maybe one or two.
Let's get this right.
I know, I'm not feeling right. But, John, you mentioned the vehicle storage, and because it's, it's considered storage, it doesn't have to fit in lanes and nooks and crannies, but you also mentioned that it might fit ten to twelve cars. I would like to see a condition that there's not more than twelve cars in that space, because that's, things pile up outside these types of operations.
That's a reasonable condition.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Outside.
So Judy, what-
It was in that front corner John mentioned, it wasn't really marked as parking, do you see what it is?
It's this area right here.
So there'd be stackings-
Actually, the way to solve this is no parking in areas other than shown on the plan, shown as parking on the plan, so, so yes, they can't be parking all over the place.
They're just going to park in the, in the veh, in the storage area, they're going to store cars there, not necessarily parks.
Inside the building?
No, it's outside. It's, it was called storage area.
It's labeled vehicle storage area.
Vehicle storage area.
Yeah, those are shown as designated parking stalls.
No, those are the existing parking stalls, sorry about that. It's just going to be, you know, those over time will go away, he's going to store his cars there, the ones that are going to be worked on, right? So similar to any place where you bring your car to be repaired, they don't need to go into, into marked parking stalls, because, you know, he's, he's got the key to it, he can, you know, get as many of them as he can in there reasonably. I just figure, if you figure a car's about seven feet wide and about sixteen feet long, and he sticks them all in there, he can get about ten or maybe twelve cars in there. So they're not going to be necessarily parked at any angle, he can't block the aisle, he can't block any other parking stalls, but he can, it's a vehicle storage area. But, and again, if, it is, believe me, you're not going to get more than twelve, so if you want to put that in as a condition, and again, I talked to the applicant about if they find they need more storage area, don't just start parking on the grass or whatever, let's come back to me, let's get a plan together, talk to the people who are going to, you know, advise us and guide us, and then come in front of whatever board it would be, this board probably, and the planning board. But, you know, for now, we've been able to identify an area because there are extra parking spaces here. The people who are going to occupy this other part of the building have seen this, and they, they're happy because they're using the parking spaces that are in the front of the building, and there aren't any parking spaces being removed at that location. And so they're happy with what they have in the location of those parking spaces. The ones that are being removed really aren't parking spaces. One of them's where there's a giant utility pole, which you can't park there, and the other one's too small, this one right here is too small for parking vehicles.
I just have one more, one more condition, John. You mentioned that there'd be no car washing on the inside of the building, and I'd like to see that stated as a condition, just in an effort to keep excessive water beyond some slush on a wheel coming in, I'd like to make sure that there's no excessive use of water running out, dragging the floating oils and floating fluids to the tight tank.
So no car washing on?
No car washing, no, well, particularly on the inside, but.
Got a lot of conditions. So, I want to go over some of these conditions, and I think we should also decide whether we want to have an updated plan showing some of these things on the, on it, but, so, for conditions, catch basins on an annual cleaning schedule, concrete curbing around areas that are being designated as replacement for impervious coverage, no parking on areas not shown as parking, plantings in the areas being created as compensation for the, of impervious parking or impervious coverage, no more than twelve vehicles in the storage area, and no car washing on the site, tight tank on a operation and maintenance plan, and update all catch basins with a hooded deep sump catch basin, and show snow storage on plan. So, those are the things that we talked about. Does anybody want to discuss any of those, or do you want to discuss any of those?
The only thing I would discuss, Mr. Chairman, is, you're saying concrete curb, but can we do, you know, bituminous asphalt, concrete, like a Cape Cod berm, or do you want a concrete curb?
I guess my concern is that these, these areas should be impervious, and, I'm sorry, they should be pervious, and if they have just a-
Okay.
-a berm that somebody can drive right up on that, where it's much more difficult to drive up and over-
Okay.
-concrete curb.
Okay. Six, so six-inch veil, concrete-
Six-inch, I mean, does that make, you know, I think the idea is to make sure that this, these areas are not, are not just, you know, six months from now, parking spots again. So, so, six-inch, six-inch veil, concrete curbing. Is there anybody from the audience that wants to comment on this project? Board members ready to close the hearing?
I just had one more question. The applicant is in the process of purchasing this building?
Yes.
Is that-
He has a purchase and sales to, to-
Okay.
-purchase this building, yes.
It goes with the-
It goes with the property.
It goes with the property, right.
No, I understand that, okay.
Okay. And, I think the point about monitoring wells, I was taking notes as Mr. Glossop was talking, I, first off, I agree with what you said, not at this time, but if there's, if they're going to be doing painting up there, that might be a different conversation about monitoring wells.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
No, you didn't say it, you said, "At this point."
Right. It's, this is a little benign to be sort of going to that next level, so.
But, I think it's, it's worth considering if they come back for more. Okay. Okay, those were, those were conditions that the board discussed, and I can give them to you. If anybody has anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if you put a condition for no car washing right now, if they come back for that second permit, more than likely, they're going to need to wash the cars after painting and cleaning them. Does that have any effect on this permit? Are we going to have to come back and change this permit, or the second permit would override?
The second permit would override it, but I think that's a good point, and that's why it makes things more complicated when you don't do everything all at once, but the applicant has the right to do that. But we've, we've put the conditions in, discussed possible future conditions.
Yep.
Want to close the hearing?
Yes.
Now, voting on this will be the regular members, so at the request of the applicant, would somebody make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion on closing the hearing? That is, that is case number twenty-three dash thirty. Okay. All those in favor of closing the hearing for a special permit under the table of uses, five B one, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. So now we, we've talked about this, and we have a whole bunch of conditions as you would normally have with a special permit. Did you write them down, or do you want me to go over them?
I wrote them down.
Do you want to just hit them, and I'll check them off my list?
Sure.
And anybody else that has them too? And anybody else that has them too?
Okay, so the catch basins need to be cleaned on an annual basis. A concrete curbing with a six-inch reveal should be placed on all places deemed replaceable impervious surface area.
Shall be, yep.
No parking on areas not shown as parking on plans. The plantings that need to be put in place.
I believe on that, but there was agreement to do at least 18 inches.
18 inches.
No more than 12 vehicles in the, I believe it was the vehicle storage area. No car washing to be taking place inside.
Or, or outside. Inside or outside.
Okay. The tight tanks, tight take system needs to be on an O and M plan. And then, number eight was the update all the catch basins with hooded. I didn't get the rest of that and what it was called.
But it's deep, and you correct me, John, if I'm, deep sump catch basin. Is that the correct term?
Deep sump and hooded.
And then the last one was that there needed to be snow storage on the plan.
Good Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Procedurally, there's a lot of conditions that should be on a plan and we were gonna talk about whether or not we wanted a new plan.
Yep.
Can we talk about that?
Yeah. And I think what we can do is we can hold off until we get the new plan. And do you, well, first off, that's how you feel, right?
Yes, oh yes. There's a lot to go on.
Do you think we should get an updated plan? Other board members?
Yeah, I don't know. I think we've closed the hearing, so I don't know.
Well, I was procedurally asking the question.
Okay. No, I don't know if we...
Whatever we need to do, unprocedure it.
We closed it, so I don't know if we can accept additional information.
Town Council, do you wanna, did I close the hearing prematurely, or can we, can we have the applicant provide an updated plan and then we could vote on that?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Just simply not issue it until you're satisfied you have the plan, right? You can vote on it, just not hand it over.
No.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
No, and by the way, we do a lot of work with you. No issues with you at all, but it just makes it better that we, we know what, everything that we've talked about is now shown on the, on the plan and, and Town Council just said we can, we can do that. So I think at this point, the hearing's been closed. We have a, you know, we know what the conditions are, but we don't have to vote on it tonight. We can vote on it after we get a updated plan, which I don't think would be complicated. The hearing's been closed. We just need an updated plan.
Okay. So Mr. Chair, obviously it's the board's call on how they wanna go about doing this. I would just say, you know, we are voting on a special permit for a use. It's not site plan review or anything of that nature. So you could certainly condition it to receive that plan, for the building permit to receive that plan prior to them receiving any sort of building permits to begin. But obviously, you go about it however you want. I would just caution, you know, it's not site plan review, it's a special permit for a use.
But with that goes the, goes the plan and the conditions that we've discussed on the plan. I think it's, you know, I think it protects, to be honest, it protects everybody so that we're clear on what we've discussed and now it's on the plan for everybody to see.
Basically, you're approving it subject to the plan that shows the conditions that you voted, discussed tonight. It's really just confirming that that plan conforms, reflects those conditions. I think that's fine. As long as you look at that plan in your open meeting, the next time, right, where you vote yes, this satisfies the conditions we voted or no, it doesn't.
Okay. So we, so we don't vote on it tonight, we just?
I would vote on it, yeah.
Yep, next time.
When you receive the plan.
Okay. Next time, next time we have a meeting, do you wanna be on the agenda for?
Sure. Well, I don't see how we can, would not say that, yes.
Okay. What's the next date we have for this?
February 7.
February 7, okay. So, the hearing's been closed, but does somebody wanna make a, a, actually, do you wanna withdraw your motion?
No, so I was, well, that's procedurally, I will do that. I will withdraw my motion to close the hearing.
And do you wanna withdraw your second, Bob, or whoever?
Sure.
So, the motion's?
You didn't close the hearing.
No.
No, we voted to close the hearing.
This was to approve, so, so we've withdrawn. Okay. So, let's, so you'll come back, does somebody wanna make a motion to continue this hearing until?
February 7.
February 7.
Sorry.
At 7:00 PM here at Town Hall.
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion on continuing until February 7? Okay. And at which time we'll get an updated plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you with an updated plan. Okay, next case we have is case number 2222, Naponts Village LLC, 5 Pleasant Street, for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Master on laws 40B, as amended to allow the construction of 24 townhouse-style condominiums within seven buildings. And this was a remand from the Housing Appeals Committee. Mr. Mackey, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Phil Mackey, 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 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. As councilforeman on behalf of the applicant, with me is? Yep. I think the majority of this evening is to hear from a peer review. We have provided, or Megan's firm has provided numerous responses. She's here to discuss those as well. And from my end, I don't think I have a whole lot to contribute, but of course, if you want to answer any questions, then I can.
So I would actually suggest we turn it over to Sean, but that's certainly up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Mr. Riordan, good evening. Good to see you.
See you too.
Do you wanna come to the podium and talk about the peer review that's taking place? And there's been back and forth between you and the applicant, right?
Yeah, a bit. I mean, we didn't have too many outstanding issues as of the last hearing. So just to refresh everybody, we've issued several comment letters. This is the third. Very few outstanding issues in the last comment letter, just a couple minor things that needed to be addressed. So as of the last letter, we have received some responses to this new letter that we just issued that appear to address most of our concerns. But if I can just, I haven't issued anything as a matter of record, so I'd like to just speak to the letter three, which is the only thing that we've issued to date. So in that, I think our fundamental issue is the use of Maguire Park. So as everybody knows, Maguire Park's pretty small, by no means suitable for construction access. I think last time we were at the hearing, the neighbors were complaining about the fact that it was used for even mobilization of some of the early equipment that was there. No reason to use Maguire Park for any construction support. They have a new entrance proposed off of Pleasant Street. They should build that entrance and use that entrance, in our opinion. I think as, as of what I've heard from their recent responses, that the applicant is amenable to that, but, but my comment still remains until, until I get to respond to that. The last item outstanding was we had some concern about 12 and 15 Maguire Park. We're real close to that cleared area for the, for the new emergency exit. We asked for some consideration, some landscape improvements there to sort of buffer that cleared area from the homes at 15 and 12. As of the time of our last seminal, we hadn't seen that plan. They've submitted a plan which shows what we expected, so we were expecting not to have any issues with that. We also noted that there was kind of a light missing in one of the locations, left a little dark spot in the area. They agreed to address that in their latest revision. And then one of the things that we thought was a little odd was, they've got a nice little grass area. They have a sidewalk that follows along the driveway, but they put another sidewalk on the backside with some, some benches. Seemed a little bit overdone for the size of the grass area. We would prefer them sort of to forego one of those sidewalks in lieu of more grass. In our minds, the additional grass area is better than another sidewalk, certainly gonna be used more often. And then the last comment we had outstanding was, we just hadn't heard any closure from the fire department as to whether or not they're okay with the access. I think the last thing of debate was the way they were gonna use the emergency gate and the fire department didn't want it. But I think some, at some point in time, the board had expressed a concern about that, that entry's use and that it's only supposed to be used for emergency purposes. Really, the only way to keep it from being used more often is, is by putting a gate on it. I think Maguire Park's probably intimate enough that they can self-police, that if they see people from development using that, then they can sort of bring that condition up to the board. And the condition of approval that has that entrance only being used for emergency access gives you the, the, sort of the power to sort of issue a cease and desist or make them take some other mitigative action if the neighbors at Maguire Park sort of notice that they're using it for more than just emergency access. So really, I, I would expect that once I see this last bit of information and can formalize a letter, most of my issues will be addressed.
Would there be a gate on Maguire Park, that access there? Is that something that, it's not shown right now, but is that something that you think would be recommended?
So the last set of plans that I reviewed, there was a, an emergency gate at Maguire, at the end of Maguire Park. Not at the very end of Maguire Park, it was sort of recessed into the development.
Oh, yep.
I believe the fire department expressed some concern about not wanting to have a gate there that they would have to unlock every time they access the site. I don't wanna speak for the fire department, but in my mind, the gate is an appropriate measure because it's an emergency access. Whether the fire department wants some other condition, you know, they may want some different circulation, so I'll let them address that with the applicant.
Okay. As far as public space and recreation space on this site, what's your thoughts on that?
The green is a little, is a nice little spot, so more than we have in other places. I mean, it's, it's, without a doubt, it's a, it's a dense project. You couldn't fit another unit if you wanted to. The only reason that open space exists is because there's a large infiltration system under it. That being said, it is, it is a pretty good-sized area that should give some opportunity for open space and recreation. But that being said, yeah, it's definitely a tight site.
What's your thoughts on the parking? Because none of these units have garages and, and all the parking is outside. Do you see that in many developments in this area without garages?
It's, it's a mixture. I, I think it's gonna present challenges with snow removal and it's gonna present challenges with spill-over parking if they need it. So unlike, say, for example, Darwin Commons where we have almost like four spaces per unit. Here, I don't, I don't, I think we're, I think we're at around one and a half. So there's not a, it's, it's, again, it's gonna be tight. So from the standpoint of the board, you know, I don't know what kind of latitude you have, but there's certainly not gonna be a lot of empty spaces when you're, when these, when the place is fully occupied.
That being said, a concern would be people parking along the, I'm thinking, I'm looking here, along the sidewalk of the grassy area and that makes it, that makes it very tight, if not too tight for emergency vehicles in the area.
Yeah. Under no circumstances would you be able to park along the curbs at all. I would be more concerned about people parking in the, in the emergency access road than, than people parked on the curb. I think that's...
The emergency access road on Maguire?
Maguire Park.
Yeah, the connection to Maguire Park. They do have a pretty good-sized area for snow storage there, but again, you know, I would expect that to be an area that has to be watched to make sure that it's not encumbered with either a parked vehicle, trashcans, bikes, snow storage. So the issue that we continually face when we have these comprehensive permit projects is because there's no controls on density, you have as every usable square foot of the property is used for the development, leaving no sort of transitional or spill-over space to accommodate just the normal routine of life. So, you know, whether it's a bike, whether it's a lawnmower, whatever it is, there's just no place for to put anything other than what's already been planned for. So that's the, that's the concern we have. And that includes a, includes a visitor spot, right? I don't think we have too many, if any, visitor spots here. So that will be a continual struggle.
Okay. Board members, any questions for Mr. Riordan?
Mr. Riordan, regards to the emergency gate, which they usually are locked, are you, are you implying that you don't wanna see one there, or you're not sure what the fire department wants to do?
I have complete deference to the fire department.
Okay.
So what we typically see is a, is a lockable gate. And then there's what's called a Knox box on there where the, the fire department has the key to that box. In speaking, in reviewing what the fire department had in common is, it's inconvenient for them because they, every time they access the site, they have to use the gate. So if they bring in their vehicle, whether they're responding to a fire or not, they have to go through the gate to exit because they don't have another way of turning around. So the applicant's response has been, well, we'll just remove the gate. But that, that ignores the reason why the gate's there in the beginning, which is to manage that site for only emergency, for emergencies only. In this situation, I typically defer to the fire department, but it's a, what they show right now is, is a, is a typical, a typical way it's handled. So it's the way that Cedar's Edge was handled. We had a locked gate at the end of that emergency access.
Okay. So the emergency way in, the ambulance shows up with the fire truck to pick someone up. They're gonna come in off of Pleasant Street and they're gonna leave via Maguire Park? Cause they can't turn around?
If it's a larger fire truck, if it's a, if it's just an ambulance, the ambulance can turn around pretty comfortably.
The ambulance can turn around. That's what I thought.
There's, there's kind of a, it's a, as you come in through the entrance, there's a big left turn and then most of the units are to the left. There's a little spur of space where you could do a three-point turn and then turn around and go back out. I don't think that space is large enough to do it for a fire truck. So the fire truck, any responding fire truck will have to go through the emergency gate to exit and down Maguire Park.
To, to exit?
To exit.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect...
We have a, no, but we, we have a lot of projects in town. Pennington, they got a locked gate. New Pond Village has had a locked gate for 35, probably close to 40 years now. They do, they do know, we have them. So I guess, I'll just wait to see what the fire department suggests. I prefer to see a gate for the residents of Maguire Park. I'm not even so sure, you know, where, where that gate should be.
Right.
Because if you have it at the end of Maguire Park, you know, you're gonna have parking up to the gate inside your property, inside the applicant's, not you, Sean, inside the applicant's property. And if you have it closer to the homes, then that's, you know, that's an open, open game for parking on the other side of the gate for people going into, into the condos.
I think its current location is, in my mind, seems preferable to putting it at the end of Maguire Park.
Maguire Park.
Just from a visual perspective. So, you know, being a resident on Maguire Park, I kinda don't wanna look at the gate. So having it recessed, it's out of, out of view. And also that sort of becomes an extension of Maguire Park. So if the kids are playing in Maguire Park?
Correct.
They can sort of extend into that, that open area. So I think the location that it's shown is an appropriate location.
Okay.
Whether, whether or not it's there, whether the fire department is happy with it being there, that's a separate issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? I've got two questions then. You talked about spill-over. Was that spill-over from lighting? What were you talking, you mentioned?
Spill-over parking.
Oh, spill-over parking, okay.
To your point about there not being that many parking spaces on the site.
The other thing is, a small part of this property is located in Norwood. Is there, this might be a question for Town Council. If you look at this, there's a, a triangle, very small. I don't know how many, maybe about, maybe a thousand square feet, I don't know. Is that, is that part of this project and can't be developed in the future, or could the applicant sell that off to something else?
Yeah, they could. Well, I mean, your permit will be for the, for the parcel that's on the plan.
So, interestingly, the parcel on the plan contains a triangle in Norwood. Actually, Mr. Mackey's here. Do you, do you wanna take a? Do you want to take a stab at that?
I do have an opinion. And George is here, so hopefully he has the same one. When we did this back in 2016, his predecessor, Alana Cork, was Town Council, we asked, were asked this exact question. That time, we were under 40A, so we had to have a conforming lot with frontage and the circle. The only way to get frontage and circle is to include the Norwood land. The only way we're allowed to use the Norwood land, or excuse me, to include the Norwood land for purposes of frontage and circle, is not to use it at all. It has to be left vacant because it's not zoned residential, so it has to be not only vacant but untouched.
What's that?
So, not only vacant but untouched, so in its natural state, which is what we proposed to do then and we have proposed to do now. The current 40B application, to the best of my knowledge, we'll clearly look at this a little bit closer, does not ask for a waiver of either frontage or the circle based on the, excuse me, the 2016 opinion of Town Council. So it'd be my opinion, if you did see fit to approve this without adjusting our waivers, it has to stay both untouched and natural and part of this lot because we're not getting frontage or circle relief as part of the 40B application. If you ask us to change our waivers, then arguably it could be sold off to the neighbors, but it is not a conforming lot under any stretch of the imagination, but maybe the gun shop wanted a little bit extra land. But to, as far as I can remember, and to the best of my knowledge, as of right now, we haven't asked for the waivers, so if you do see fit to approve, can't be sold.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would include it as a condition in addition to it. You'd have a condition specifying that part of the plan shall remain part of this 40B lot and not severed or conveyed. I mean, we could think of language at the time, or you could build it into the waiver as it's saying, you know, specify what's not being waived in terms of the required frontage there. I think it would be easier maybe to try to condition it, though, that that shall not be severed from the lot, that that shall be maintained as of whatever it is, open space, I don't know what it is.
It's just a space under built.
Yeah, so I would, I mean, that sounds great, what Council is saying, but you're going to have to protect yourself one way or another, either through a condition or specifying that the waiver isn't granted for that, whatever's required there, that they need that piece for it. So it would have to definitely be incorporated into the permit somehow.
Okay. Because I think it's unusual that we would actually even be dealing with property that's not in Walpole. But I think to your point, we're saying this, this triangle here has, must remain part of the project.
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, again, we'll think of the language at the time, but you're going to have to specify it in there.
Yeah, even though it's not part of our town.
Correct, because if you, well, then if you go, that you're applying, it's saying that if they don't have that piece, they need a waiver.
Right. Okay.
So if you were to sell it off, then you would make it non-conforming?
Yeah.
Okay. Make it what?
I was going to say, if you were to sell it off, then you'd make it non-conforming based upon the prior Town Council's opinion. So if they're not asking for a waiver for it, then the Town Council said, make it a condition that it remains part of the project.
Okay.
Protects the U land then.
Okay. Good. Anybody else have questions or comments?
I just had a question on the parking again. The plan states that 48 spaces are required and you're proposing, the applicant's proposing 55 plus three accessible, so it looks like there are two, on the plan it says 2.4 spaces. That's just for people that live there, correct? It's just for the residents only, am I correct, someone?
Generally, the parking regulations, it can vary. Sometimes it's residents, they can take into account visitors and just what they think the use would be for these sorts of units. So I don't necessarily have the information on what exactly they were thinking when they proposed it, this is just the general guidelines they give us for that.
Okay. So this next to no visitor parking, is that correct? I didn't know if I'm asking an old question.
I mean, we have more than the required. There is the trade-off of the more visitor parking you have, the less open space you have, and then are you just adding additional impervious to a site that doesn't really require that? That already assumes that each unit would be using two cars, which we find usually isn't the case, especially as we kind of transition nowadays to, a lot of people prefer owning bikes and using public transportation instead. So it varies, especially when you're going towards lower-income housing units, it's less common to see two cars, but it just, it varies, it depends really on, you know, who eventually does end up living here, but that amount of parking is pretty typical for this sort of era. We usually don't see any issues with overflow parking. I know there was some comments about the access, emergency access drive being used as parking there. We did have proposed on the last set of plans, I believe, to have signage and pavement markings there to, you know, cordon off the area, to make sure, remind residents that you can't park over there. The fire department did seem like they didn't want the gate there, which we were amenable to if that's what they decide, we're kind of, we kind of err on the side of usually just going with what the fire department would like to see most. I think, it seems like they wanted to be able to use it in either direction if they had to for any reason. So I don't necessarily think it would be an issue having the parking over there, and as someone mentioned, I believe this, I think Sean mentioned it, that it's a pretty, like, tight-knit area, so I'm sure, you know, if that was happening, someone would call and, you know, notify the town that that was an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
On the gate, if I could just add, I mean, an option is to have the gate and leave it open, right? So if the board asks for the gate, the fire department at least has the option of having the gate and whether it's open or closed, then the board at least has that control.
Thank you.
I think it'd be interesting to hear from the fire department about the gate because it strikes me, and again, I'm not an expert, but it strikes me that the response time to even the units that are closest to where the gate is proposed would still be shorter if you just stayed on Pleasant and drove in straightaway, and that there wouldn't be a need to go in both directions. But that's just an assumption, it'd be great to hear from the fire department.
Have the gate addressed. The other thing is, on sheet nine of the plan, it shows the-
So we did get comments on the January 17th.
Okay.
From fire department.
Oh, from Alan?
Yep.
So on page nine of the plan, it shows the fire truck up on the curb. Did he address that? Does everybody see that on page nine? As the fire truck enters the site, it shows it going up on the curb on the right-hand Actually, looks like across the walk, no, actually, all the way across the walkway. So I'm just trying to find out, Sean, your thoughts on that, or the fire department's thoughts?
I believe the line that you see is actually the swept path for example, the wheel path is still in the curve. That's the way I understand the drawing. So if you can imagine, the bumper extends quite a bit beyond the front tire.
Yep.
So the bumper extends over the curve, but the wheels stay within the travel way.
Okay. Do you want to comment on that?
I didn't want to interrupt you while you were speaking of it, but yeah, there's a few different lines that show there. You'll see the, I think it's lines there are for the tire tracks, and then there is a thinner set of lines that are for the front bumpers and the back bumpers to show you where those bumpers go, so those bumpers after, will go kind of like above the curb slightly while the tires are still remaining completely within the road.
Thank you for that explanation. Is there, then, I'll ask you, is there any place on this plan where the tires go over the curb?
No.
Okay. Anybody else before we open it up to the public comments on this?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, Drew?
Are any of the units proposed to be ADU accessible? Or ADA, sorry.
ADA.
ADU, ADA.
As far as I know, I don't believe they are.
And then the location of the trash, is that communal to every resident in the development?
Yep, that's communal for everyone.
So everyone will drag their trash down into that area?
Right. That's why we have the sidewalks and the accessible curbs leading up to that area so they can access it, access it rather safely away from traffic.
Okay. And then from an engineering standpoint, the turn of a trash truck to pick up those dumpsters, does that propose any sort of challenge or obstruction to the entryway of the site?
It would depend on the vehicle, but most of like the ones that take our dumpsters are front-loading, so I wouldn't expect there to be an issue with getting access to those.
But in order, like you say, to be front-loading, that vehicle has to somehow maneuver itself up into the site, do a 360 turn to pick up the dumpsters?
I believe there's enough space there, but if you want to have, they can do it in our turn showing that.
Yeah, no, I was just curious if it was looked at.
Wait, wait.
Sorry, it's a pretty, it's a pretty good-sized open area of pavement at that intersection.
Okay. And as far as the handicap spots you show, you have three locations where somebody in a wheelchair could get, there's a lowered curb, so to say?
Correct.
So realistically, anyone in any unit who might need some sort of accessibility would have to be using one of these three locations to get into their unit? Is that correct?
In order to get up from where we should, yes, so ideally, you know, those units would be the kind of, the closest units that would be preferred for someone who needs a possible parking.
Yeah, okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this?
Thanks, Chairman. Bill O'Connell for joint task. He directed butter at Five Pleasant, and through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could just submit a two-page letter for the board's consideration. Appreciate it, thank you. And there should be, should be about eight copies here, so certainly I could find more. Thank you.
I want to make sure Town Council gets one. I don't have one, so I'll look on it too. No, I'll look on it. Okay. Mr. O'Connell, good evening.
Thank you, Mr., good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the Town Developer, Town Council. Just very briefly, I can just speak to the issues in my correspondence request through you and through peer review. We were hoping, we were hoping that the peer review report would address the environmental concerns, which we've referenced previously, with the proximity to certainty, the parcel, concerned about the clear cutting of the trees and the air quality issues. It appears that that hasn't been done, so we respectfully request that the board consider having Mr. Riordan address that. I think at the November, it might have been the November 1st meeting, we were under the impression that, I think one of the board members had requested it, that that would be addressed. And again, really, the issues are the existing, just the existing air quality and the plumes that my client and some of the other neighbors could probably speak to from certainty, we're just concerned with the, you know, the substantial clear cutting that's going to occur, as well as what's in the soil at this point. So along those lines, we're requesting through you the 21E report, if the applicant would be willing. I think that would be significant for your board to look at. And then, just with respect to the issue that came up previously with the split boundary lines amongst the towns, I did attach the Town Council's memo from 2016 for the 40A, and I guess the question that we have, and maybe Attorney, Town Council can weigh in on this, or may have already weighed in, but, you know, does, does this, does your board, to speak to your concerns, does your board need something from the Town of Norwood indicating that they're okay with this, that it's not an active use, what's being proposed is not an active use? I think that was, that was included in 2016. I realize it was 40A, this is a 40B, and the waiver's not being requested, but I guess the question is, can the, you know, can you grant a waiver if a waiver's granted based on the new 40B without a determination from the Town of Norwood? Because I did include the Town of Norwood by law also, which references to split boundary lots and how they're addressed. So I understand if the Town, if Norwood doesn't want to touch it, but I think that the board should consider, and maybe it's through you, Mr. Chairman, through Town Council, whether that's necessary, whether you need something from the Town of Norwood. So that's, that basically encompasses what we're requesting in the memorandum. Just technically, my client did have, again, my client is, he's about 16 feet, he's at Five Pleasant, so he's, his lot's about 16 feet from, I think it's unit, might be unit 24. So obviously, he's got, you know, he's got concerns with the density, with the number of units, especially given the history, and he's also concerned with the front sidewalk, which appears, we thought had been removed, but maybe, maybe the engineer can clarify this, but it looks like there's also a sidewalk that surrounds the detention base. So we were hoping for some clarification on that. My client obviously doesn't want benches away from, you know, in his backyard. And then also with the phasing, with the phasing, we understand that, you know, nothing should be done to Maguire Park, but my client's trying to understand, as again, I don't want to speak for the abutters on Maguire Park who I imagine have substantial concerns with the fire truck issue, but he's trying to get a sense of how long, you know, how long this is potentially going to take, you know, given what has to occur on Maguire Park. And I think, you know, again, I'm not going to address the turnaround issue, I'll leave that for the neighbors on Maguire Park, but I think the fire department was pretty clear in their January 17th letter that they need a cul-de-sac. So, you know, so again, I understand the board's concerns, I would hope that they could address some of these issues, especially the environmental concerns, and we appreciate the board's time this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So don't go far. Mr. Riordan, were you going to say something?
So just real quickly, we did, following that last meeting, I did check DEP's spills and sites database. Nothing nearby. It's not going to speak to the issues that were expressed, the air quality issues, really, it's just a resource that we can check to see if there are any hazardous waste sites or disposal sites or spills history. We didn't find anything in that search, so really, we sort of exhausted those obvious avenues for looking into that, but aside from that, I don't know where else we'd look for the kind of issues that they were referring, like the air quality issues. Without having an existing record of there being some violation or some, you know, issue, we didn't- we didn't, we didn't find anything otherwise.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. O'Connell, following up on what Mr. Riordan said, you talked about a 21E report. Is there, I'm going to start with you because then I'll go to-
Sure.
-their council. Is there a 21E report for this site?
I, I can't answer that, but I'm assuming, I'm assuming there isn't, they're financing it. I don't know if it's a phase-
No, I'll ask, I'll ask Mr. Mackey now.
Yeah.
Mr. Mackey.
I actually can't say that definitively there is. I assume so, but I don't know.
Okay. So, um, is, I think the neighbors are raising questions about the environmental conditions of the property. Can you find out if one, if there is a 21E environmental report for the property? And if so, is your, you know, client willing to-
I can find out both of those.
Make that part of the-
It is, we will submit one to that as part of the record.
Okay.
And it will be available.
Okay.
Just a quick clarification. So, there's a phase one under 21E, but there's also a phase one, as you know, that's under ASTM standard, that either one of those would be of interest, not just the 21. Thanks.
Mr. O'Connell, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Attorney Mackey. And then, uh, thank you, Mr. Riordan, appreciate it. I know there has been a history at the site. I think I had submitted just some EPA submissions at one of the prior meetings. So, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at that with respect to the history of the site, but, or whether that will provide any value, but, uh, but I do, I do raise that, bring that to the board's attention.
But I think the way to do it is we're going to find out if, if there is a 21E and if there is, it will, and also the AST-
ASTM.
ASTM. That would be entered as part of the record, so then we can take a look at it and see if there's things that need to be addressed, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this?
Hey, I'm Scott McCallum. I live at 37 Pleasant Street, right on the corner of Maguire Park. I'm concerned about the parking situation. There's 55 spots, there's 24 units. If each master bedroom has a couple living in it, that 48 parking spots are already gone. And there's 26 other bedrooms to be considered. There's no place else to park, you're going to end up on Maguire Road. Uh, you can't park on that road legally. It's just going to be a mess.
So, that's one of the things that we're trying to, where possible, not have happened. It comes down to a question of, you know, density and parking and the number of units. But it also comes down to an enforcement issue where if people on Maguire Park or Pleasant Street even start seeing vehicles being parked out there-
Of course, recall, but it doesn't stop them from doing it.
Right. And our problem is, at that point, it's too late, but what we're dealing with is, you know, a state law on the 40B, so trying to, trying to address these issues, but we can't control what somebody is going to do in the future. We can only try to make the project, the best project so that it doesn't happen. And the way we do that is have additional parking, but that's, that's-
But that's not going to happen.
Well, the applicant is not, um, this is the plan before us, and what we can do is we can make conditions or we can deny it, so.
Hey, everybody. My name is Greg Nylund. I live at 11 Maguire Park. I'm an immediate and butter on multiple sides of the project, front of the house, back of the house. You know, I think this is my third or fourth time coming up here, you know, and every single time, it's been, it's been an issue and it's come up and I feel like we're trying to work around all of these things about overcrowding, overcrowding, overcrowding. From third party, from the abutters, I think Bob, you actually, last time, you actually asked for them to look at reducing the units and see what that plan would look like. Again, the plan is the exact same, same amount of units. It's extremely tight, it's up against, I mean, right to the boundaries. And, I mean, we're all, we're all talking about the parking and we're trying to work around like what's going to work with the access road and all these things. And all those things get mitigated if we reduce the unit count and just makes for a much more environmentally friendly area, better for the neighborhood, you know, and I'm just really just disappointed that the overcrowding has not been addressed in any way. So, I'm just going to come up here for 60 seconds. Two more things I want to hit on is, is Maguire Park directly, I'm going to address Maguire Park. Maguire Park is my driveway. It's a driveway, okay? It's a dead end, it's a one-way. When I park in my actual driveway next to the house, I shut the door, walk behind a car, walk on the road and go five steps to my house. It's 12 feet from the road. My first step is 12 feet from the road. So, I mean, everybody that are coming up here with the abutters, it's, you know, we talked about at length, all of the issues that we've had in the past, all the issues about, you know, with this project from Maguire Park, you know, from the kids using the street and just how it really is just a driveway. There's just so many issues with turnaround access. And if we just remove that altogether, again, it, and it turns into a cul-de-sac or something like that, it reduces a lot of potential issues. And not only that, and when they do work on Maguire Park, we will be losing part of our front lawn, that little that we have, and they will be widening the road, right? So, that is obviously not, not ideal either, because we have such little green space in front of our houses anyway. I also wanted to just talk about lastly is just the overall impact of the, not just Maguire Park, but just all of these wall hole. Clear cutting, that little small plot of land is going to make the certainty plant visible to the entire neighborhood. Union Street sits much higher than Pleasant, right? You've got the intersection from Union Pleasant, on the backside, there's a bunch of buddies back there. They will sit higher and they will have full view of the plant that runs 24 hours a day. It smells. We're dealing with a shingle factory, which is tar, you know, they are dealing with like asphalt all day, it's not great smell sometimes in the summer. So, that's obviously why we're talking about the environmental impact, but it really is blocking a lot of the sights and sounds from a plant that runs 24/7 with noise and floodlights that are also on. So, you've got to think about this neighborhood that's going in there. Floodlights from the plant will be in their windows. So, I think that's something that the zoning board's going to have to just consider, right? With the light and sound pollution, what is this, how is that project going to address that? So, I, I mean, the current layout is just not, I don't see it's a real benefit to the neighborhood. So, I mean, again, we've addressed things in the abutters letters and things that we've called out, we don't have to go through every single one, but just want to again, address our concerns at a high level for you guys. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Have you seen the landscape plan that they've provided?
I did, yes, I did. I appreciate that they did do that and I'm glad it was addressed. The green giant albertis I planted three times, I tried to plant those on the corner of, right where, to make a little natural fence myself, they've all died. So, how, who's going to take care of those, all those plants? Is HOA going to happen in this, in this project? I didn't hear or I didn't read anything about that plan.
Why don't you just come to the microphone so-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were speaking about-
You are.
Yeah, sorry. So, yeah, I don't know if HOA is going to have, you know, who is dealing with the landscape and who's taking care of all those trees? I would prefer both, you know, as a Director Butter, I would love to have a, you know, a natural environmental fence through trees, a lot more trees hopefully, taller trees, but also fencing as well. So, thank you.
Yep.
Thomas Cafalos, I'm at 8 Maguire Park. Apparently, nobody in this new development is going to have any parties of sorts, sort of parking. I know for us, when we have parking problems, Seth, Greg, myself, Mr. C, we all work together to park in everybody else's driveways and kind of not get the street crowded, because if that happens, then, you know, Seth can't get to his driveway if I've got five cars out front and, you know, there's just nowhere to go with these cars. It just, it's just not possible. Like, we use each other's driveways just to have parties. So, unless we're under the assumption that nobody in their development is going to have a birthday ever again, or any party, or a Super Bowl party, it's just crazy. It's just like, where is it going to go? We need somewhere to go and if they could make it somewhere to go, it would make sense, but there isn't anything. My other concern is, I'm a truck driver, that is an extremely tight turn for the fire department to come out of that, like, little area back onto Maguire. In fact, his fence might be gone if that truck takes that turn. Now, put a car on that street and try to get that truck to make that turn. It's not possible. It's extremely tight. So, I think that's something that they should look at. It'd be nice to have that seen and looked at as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I promise we're not all twins, we all have the shaved head and the beards, but it's just a trend that we're doing on Maguire Park. Seth Williams, 15 Maguire, thank you for letting us speak, as you always do. Just a, just a couple of points. I know that Mr. Gass's attorney mentioned the fire department letter, so I just, I just wanted to point that out because it does mention that the gate just doesn't work. I appreciate the fact that there's so many other units that it does, so I think that should be pushed, that if that's going to prevent parking on Maguire Park, that the gate should be there if that goes forward. But it's interesting, the next point the fire department deputy chief Alan makes is that there should be a cul-de-sac. Like, it's not about the gate, it's about the fact that like, Maguire Park should not be used as egress. Now, I get it, like, there's three houses on Maguire Park and we have to have fire department come down this 18-foot street, Sean, I think you said 18 feet? So, I get that like they're already having to cram down Maguire, but they just pull in and back out. And it's just three houses. If there's now 24 other houses that could have emergencies at any time, like, and there's 50 something parking spaces, that's 50-plus people that could have an emergency. And I'll tell you right now, trash barrels on Maguire Park will, they'll probably have to run them over, or if anyone decides to park in front of their house and empty groceries, someone's life could be lost. So, I understand that the board's decision is to make an action now, like, what can we control now to make this the best project? Don't use Maguire Park as an emergency egress for this huge complex that's going in. Like, find a different way to get and save lives. Like, that, that's what I would do, and I know it's up to the deputy chief, but that's what he's saying. He's saying, do a cul-de-sac. And that won't happen. Like, lives won't be lost. So, I know that seems aggressive, but that's what they have to worry about. My best friend's a fire, a fireman in Canton, so I was talking to him about it a lot. So, that's a, that's a big piece there that I wanted to mention. Appreciate, Sean, the peer review, the construction not happening on Maguire, happening on Pleasant through that entryway. Appreciate the landscaping that we're seeing now, going on the other side at the end of 15 and 12. So, seeing like that there's responsiveness to certain things, but I just, I didn't want to not acknowledge that. Do we want the project to happen in the way, in its current form? No. We're hoping that it gets declined in its current form. I know there's minimal control over 40B, but I think this egress and using Maguire Park is a big piece of it. I think the density is a big piece of it. The garbage truck was a great question that I also had in my head. If there's 24 units, how are they going to move in? How is a big, full, moving truck going to get in there and actually like navigate in that parking area and drop off furniture and deliveries and then get out? I just think it's, you know, it's just, it's so dense and so packed, there's just no room for a single mistake. And I think just a little bit of reasonableness, a cul-de-sac could solve some of that. So, I know there's going to be future discussions, so I'll just, I'll just stop there and thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Riordan, the cul-de-sac that's been brought up a couple of times, what's your, what's your thought on, on that? And I know it's not part of the plan right now, but does it make, is there space, what do you think?
It certainly would fit. It wouldn't fit with the 24 units. You'd probably lose at a minimum four units. We'd start to figure out a way to park. So, what a cul-de-sac does is it, is it basically you get to put a little ball at the end of the existing roadway. So, instead of going on to the, the access drive and then on to Maguire Park, they come to the end of the road, turn around and go out the same way they came. Site's big enough to fit it, it would just cost units.
Okay.
I mean, and it would, without question, it's preferable to using Maguire Park. I think that's clear. Maguire Park isn't a standard subdivision roadway. So, the applicant and their engineers have done a really good job. They've used every square inch of that site, they've used every square inch of Maguire Park, you know, they've demonstrated that they can get a fire truck through there. Whether that's the best solution, I think that's still something for debate.
So, so the, yeah, the, a cul-de-sac would, a cul-de-sac would address some of these issues and alleviate some of the parking, some of the turnaround issues, the question about using Maguire Park, so.
Yes, no storage as well. So, I mean, with that, much more space to work in, and also a little bit better for the open space factor, right? If you have a cul-de-sac, it's another place for kids to play, you know, playing street hockey growing up. Unfortunately, I didn't live on a cul-de-sac, lived on a main road, so that was moving the nets every, every 10 minutes, right? Cul-de-sac would have been pretty awesome, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, does somebody else want to make a comment on this? Okay, great. So, Mr. Mackey, I think we, we hear, you know, from the peer review, there's a question about, you know, cul-de-sac would be, would be better, loss of units possibly on that, decrease in parking, which is better for the site. We've talked about this.
We have.
And the question is, you know, we have it, that it would be a safer project with that, so I think that's something that needs to be considered on your applicant's part, so.
I never like saying no, but I'm also not going to lie to the board. That is the one thing that I am not authorized to agree to.
Oh, I know, and I wasn't asking that. What I'm just saying is, what you're hearing-
We have-
Is your applicant, I don't believe the applicant's-
He's not here.
Right. So, what I'm saying is, you know, I know it's, I know it's not ultimately your decision, but what we're hearing from the engineer and what we're hearing from everybody and all the evidence is pointing to the fact that by creating a cul-de-sac here, it could improve the safety of the project. That's all, you know, I'm letting, letting you know.
And I will absolutely, as engineer's here, so she's definitely heard it, she's the one who's drawing this. I will make sure that is relayed, and that's the best that I can-
I understand where you're coming from.
Yes, but we have heard that loud and clear. For what it's worth, different regimes, if you will, at the fire department, when we originally proposed this in 2016, we did not have the go-through to Maguire Park. And we were not just told, but no, but hell no, they wanted an access. So, we've gotten promoted and moved on.
Was there, was there a cul-de-sac?
Well, that was what we initially proposed because we expected our neighbors to say exactly what they did. And we were told that that was unsafe and not the right thing to do. So, we'll go back and talk to the fire department again, but they have done a 180 on this particular.
Okay.
But again, we're here de novo, so we will take your comments and theirs and seriously look at them, but that's the best I can do.
I understand. So, at this point, oh, did you want to add something?
We did look at options that did have the cul-de-sac. What you kind of run into is there is a big impact on the amount of parking you have and then, in turn, because you need to move that park in, then the green space tends to get cut down quite a bit, even with reduced units and which would reduce the park in. Overall, it just, it's kind of wasted space if there's a way to have kind of a thruway for a fire truck to go through, is kind of what we found in the site.
Okay. Okay. So, at this point, we still have some fire, fire department- So, at this point, we still have some fire department issues, but I think, are there other things that board members want to have addressed? Judy?
Mr. Mackey, when you said it was a different regime, I thought you were going to talk about the different board members here.
No.
I know, I would appreciate, just hear me out, Phil. Looking back at the original decision, which was approved by the planning board but denied by the zoning board, I looked at the plan, it was a lovely plan, but I'm sure nobody wanted that plan either, because no one likes change. Now, change is, this isn't just change, this is a, this, to me, is a disaster in that neighborhood. The density, and everyone's talking about density, density, density. Our peer review said you've used every nook and cranny possible. And I'm sure there's, you know, rationale reason, and we all know what that is, but I would really hope that, in my opinion, is the density, less units with a cul-de-sac, no use of Maguire Park, the old plan, Mr. Mackey, the old plan, or at least a modified version of it, not the extreme version that you've brought before this board, just because it's 40B. And that's my opinion, so I won't speak for the rest of the board, but this is a different board, so in a perfect world, if you were to withdraw this 40B and come back with a 40A, you know, but I'm sure that door's closed. But the plant.
I will relay that, to be honest, I have.
That's my opinion. I mean, I, years ago, I had another position in town, and there was a developer wanted to put a 40B in the most ridiculous location, and all it took was a conversation. Do you really want to do that? And the two guys, they weren't from town, they thought about it, and they built single family homes. So, it never hurts to ask, so I'm asking. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Anything else on that? And I think, I think those comments were good comments. What's the, do you want to continue this, Mr. Mackey?
Yes, I assume that, I'm sorry, I didn't ask, but.
What's the next date we have for continuance?
I'm sorry, February 7th and March 6th, and then the secondary meeting for February, if we felt that we needed, was February 26th. That's the fourth Monday.
Right. So, February 7th is, we've got Darwin.
Darwin and Fox Hill.
Darwin is going to be the big one on that, and Fox Hill should be relatively quick. Or, we could also meet on February 26th, that's a Monday.
That's fine.
February 26th. Is that okay with board members?
Okay.
So, does somebody want to make, anything else for tonight, before, I don't want to make a mistake again?
[laughing]
Does somebody want to make a motion to continue this hearing until February 26th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall?
So, moved.
Moved by Judy. Second by Dave. Any further discussion on continuing the hearing? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. Okay. Thank you, everybody.